County Planning Board has the right of review. They do not have a right of yea or nay, but they have a right of review in respect to our own zoning and any impacts that may have upon the county as a whole. They have the right to comment on that. If that is failed, we fail to do that, that's grounds to have your, your decision thrown out. If somebody really challenged, challenged that with an Article seventy-eight or something, okay? So, we just take your application, but we need your site plan. We're gonna need that ASAP, okay?
What, what does that entail? What do I need to do for a site plan?
Okay, get a, get a piece of graph paper. You know, get the, get the quarter inch square stuff, alright? So that you can have a good scale of your property. Scale this out, show your house, show your yard, show where a proposed fence would be, large fence, and then randomly place your, place your chicken coop in there.
Do you have a story?
Yeah. He does, but it, it don't look so good.
He needs, it needs to be, it needs, he needs to get the pen. He's got to convince some of that stuff. But you need to clean that up. Alright, I do not. In my ass chair. I do have an application. Alright, so you got an application. I got a secret. We wanna do the secret now?
Do it. Do it at the time of the meeting.
Okay, so we need that plan. We need that plan, this has gotta go to county. So, these folks, I'm gonna ask them to schedule your public hearing for, Secretary?
August fourth at six forty-five.
August fourth, six forty-five, right here, okay? How it's gonna work, it's gonna be probably very similar to what you're seeing tonight. Alright, so you'll be here, we'll give you the opportunity before that hearing to explain to your neighbors what it is, show them the site plan, et cetera, et cetera. You won't get into a one-on-one, tit-for-tat form with them. Then they will address their comments to us.
We need that back ASAP.
That's right. That's like. They got thirty days, and they'll, they'll use the thirty, but we wanna get, cause you're, we're meeting the seventh now, we're gonna meet the fourth, it's a short period. So we gotta get it in and hopefully they'll get it back to us. We can't take any action without it.
So, a hand drawn?
That's good enough, as long as you got a good, you know, fill it full of details. I mean, the more details you have.
Okay, the scale, you know.
Yeah, do scale, do scale, all of that.
Mr. Congressman, did you address, should we go or can it still?
Can it still?
Do you have it? I have it here, one eleven month. Okay? Okay, Ford, give me a motion here.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. We will see you.
Hi.
Hey, I have a minute.
Site plan, shall I give that to?
Bring it right in, give it to these guys right here, or drop it off in the, in the codes office. Jerry, Jerry will take it.
I'm taking the letters.
Okay, let me have the, let me have them back. I'll put one and five. Okay, I have one, two, three, four, John, you kept yours?
Five.
John, can I even, I don't read this picture.
We had seven though.
You wanna buy a douter yet? I'll douterize it. I have, I have one, but I'm holding on mine.
I got, I got five.
It's under attorney's shield.
I think I had seven. Are you gonna take it?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
It's lucrative.
Do you have it for two dollars?
I put this in the box.
Three bucks? No, I don't have it.
Three is a three?
I never charge anybody. Who did you charge people?
I didn't charge anybody.
See, you're a nice person.
Are you a douter?
I used to be.
Are you now?
No.
She was, she was, you were stripped of your, uh, of your title.
Okay, you're good.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Pete Kells sits around.
You did mine a couple times.
Is he there?
Yeah.
He's not out there? Who's, who's that, what's her name?
Oh, we got, oh, no Pete?
So, no show on Pete?
Oh, thank you, Pete.
Yeah, my note said that he's off the agenda if he didn't come tonight.
Pardon?
I had some notes saying he was gonna be advised.
Jerry called him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, well, actually in January, he was.
I, and I brought it to him personally, I run it to him personally and said, Pete, you have something. Okay. Okay. Alright. Michelle, there's a, there's a name we haven't seen in quite a while.
She's the art lady, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Ready for some sales.
Alright.
Trailer sales.
Right.
And you're the role, are you in the real estate business?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, are you the, are you the owner of the property?
Yes, I am, and I do rent out the, I rent out the trailer of the dog and wife.
So, the name of the applicant is Home Joy Realty? Who, who's that?
That's me.
So, you own Home Joy Re, Home Joy Realty?
It was a dumb idea of my lawyer to give it that name.
Now, who's, who's, whose name is on the deed?
Probably Home Joy Real.
Probably, do you know?
I'm pretty sure, because all of it goes through the taxes, goes through the Home Joy Realty.
That doesn't necessarily mean that. My, my name's on my mother's property, but she's got, I have her deed, but she gets the tax. We just, but at some point, we'd just like to know who we're issuing this to. Was the owner.
I, I could call, look it up, um, and.
But you are Home Joy Realty?
Yes. I'm, I'm the sole member of the LLC.
Same LLC.
Alright, why, tell us, tell us why you're, tell us why you're here.
I would like a permit to build, um, to have a tent about fifty feet, I believe, along thirty-one.
Alright, she got a notice of remedy. She, she started to build a fence in a business zone. And those of you that are familiar with her property in Lakeport, it's right there on, uh, on the, uh, on the north side of Route thirty-one, and, uh, uh, there's several buildings, several buildings right along the.
Kind of close to the road.
Pardon?
Kind of close to the road.
Right, but where she has the fence, again, I think we're gonna have you clean up this a little bit. It's, it's a little vague. If, if we go, if we went down there and you see the fence, the fence is out of any parking area. In other words, where she wants to do it, she wants a six-foot fence. Now, why do you want the six-foot fence?
Cause my dog is as big as I am, and then when he jumps up two feet off the ground.
Okay, it's a dog, it's for the dog.
It's for the dog.
You had a little guard in there, I thought you had very large rabbits. Huh? No, okay.
Well, I have rabbits too, but I.
Okay, so it's for the dog, that's what it is.
Well, it's for my privacy and.
Alright, that other, the house where that one corner is, cause we, we have looked at this. Where the, towards the lake, that corner, is that, that house is also owned by your property?
Yes.
Okay.
As a part of the, yeah.
Ah, okay. And everything is on the same deed? In other words, that's not a separate deeded piece of property, that other house?
Yeah, it's one deed.
Okay, alright. We're gonna need you to, uh, I, again, board members, what I'm saying to you here is.
Do you know a picture of the property?
I got something.
Maybe you want the bigger one?
Yeah, yeah, maybe even bigger. Better than what we have.
Oh, but I didn't.
I see where they started to put it up. Yeah.
Although it's, that is a copy of that of essential part.
Let's see what that is. Now, see, she's gonna have to come up with a better plan of that. Alright, this, this property, this property here is on the north side, north side, north side of Route, Route thirty-one. And there is a bunch of, bunch of buildings here. One, two, three. The, the fence that she's kinda have drawn in here.
Right here.
Yeah, that's it. But it comes right up to the corner, right up, it comes off this and around the front, right here. It comes up to the corner of this and back. There's parking, this is parking, I would call it asphalt. Then she's got, are you still running your arch for this, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so what are these, this, you'll see a kind of a decorative building here. This is pretty a bunch of, this is just a residential unit. Well, she's put, wants to put a fence in here, but it's going to be, it's. If it were a house, it were a house and she had the, and a board at the front and the six-foot fence is in the back, she probably could get, she could do that. But it's, in a business zone, we have to approve all fences. It's up front, it's right along the road, and she's doing it to, uh, to, what is the construction?
The thing, thing is, I, I really don't have, I can't have a back, um, because there's right-of-way to trees, so I can't, don't have a, a private area to sit in the back, so that's kind of what I want to do.
Okay, what we're gonna ask you to do, we're gonna have to have a public hea, well, we can, or, I was trying to see if we could not do that, but I'm afraid without a good plan, you're gonna, we still, we still can do that, Ford, if you really want. I mean, I don't see any impact with anybody else there, or anybody that would have any concerns.
And, and I'm a little bit away from the street, so it doesn't look.
That's it, yep, just got it.
Get them up in there and go.
Yep, yep.
Then he comes back to the house in there?
Right here, no, yep, right here.
Go over there and back to the house.
Yep, that's it.
That is a lot.
We're talking about here's the problem here then, right?
Might be too close.
Fifty, fifty feet.
Don't know what that, we don't know what that is.
What about the sight line here? Cause isn't that?
No, we sat there, you've got no problem with sight.
No problem, okay.
Six-foot height.
I'm getting a little bit greater, I don't know.
No, you sit here, you sit here, you come out here, the fence is behind you.
Yeah.
The fence is behind you, you have no, no visibility issues on, on thirty-one.
And that's, that's the right-of-way there.
Yeah, it's parking lot, the golden parking.
No, but I'm saying this line here, that's the, the road, the state road, right away, okay.
Okay, Michelle, what we're gonna, Ford, Ford, would you want to have a public hearing?
I don't think it has any.
Alright, so what we're gonna do, Michelle? You're gonna, you're gonna.
Sorry.
Okay.
Marcel.
But, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all. He helps me do anything.
Marcel. Yeah, okay, Marcel. We need a more, a better site plan. You can take one of these, but get a ruler, do a little better job of outlining the fence, knowing what the distance is.
That is pretty accurate to the.
Yeah, but it's pretty hard to figure out what you have here.
Close it.
Yeah, you don't know.
That's fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Is that the water? We need some critical dimensions, you know, there's key dimensions that are missing, we can't tell.
Why don't you take, why don't you, why don't you walk back there and show her what, what you would want?
So, what am I showing here? This is a gravel?
This, yeah, you're coming up the road, this is a highway.
This is enough. So, we want, we need to know what that dimension is.
Show her the road.
She's saying forty-six, how do we know what that is, right? Twenty-four feet and I know forty-six.
But the problem is, this is pretty cor, close to the corner of that house. That's why I asked her, she owns, I couldn't remember. She owns, she owns, that's part of the whole lot.
And, and I did even ask the tenant, you know, and it does not. And it does not interfere with them seeing.
So, who are we looking for? You know, look up close at this, you know, what is, it comes in here and does this, does that, the outpost, it's a sheet.
Okay.
So, that's.
Okay.
So, she puts it to the right. Why does it have to come back this far? And she's fifty feet here, why can't it come back?
We can do renovations right here.
Yeah.
Rick's here.
That's the part.
Rick's right there, right there. Yep. Okay.
Rick, does he need to correct county referral? Does he have county referral on this, cause it's on thirty-one?
Yeah, that, well, yeah, that's right, it's gotta go, it's gotta go to certain, it's gotta, it's gotta have. But that doesn't mean you don't have to have a hearing, she's gotta come back. She's gotta bring back a better site plan, she's gotta have to have that right now.
So, public hearing, GM, the center line?
Well.
No public hearing.
No public.
Public hearing.
Fifty feet, what's it, what's a fifty feet on a state highway?
What's that?
The, the right-of-way?
Uh, they're ninety-nine, they're ninety-nine foot road down there, so I can't tell you.
So, I mean, it's, you know, you've got, you've got a right-of-way outside.
So, but this is the gravel, gravel, it's, it's a mansion or a car, so, you know, that is like.
I don't know. But, but again, what you're saying, physical, vertical line here, we need to know what that is. So, maybe if we just move this back to ten feet, or if you just made to the corner of the porch. So, I don't know that, that's what I'm saying. See, that would solve the problem right there.
Here?
Yeah, right there.
Wow.
What's all that?
Well, that, that services, that services.
Again, I mean, I'm just making a suggestion. And that would solve the problem.
Yes, it does.
It would affect it.
Yeah. She's got her business, she teaches art, she has a little art school.
We don't wanna do a public hearing, do we? So, she has most of her property.
She owns all of it, she owns all of it.
Okay, alright, so there really no impact anybody else.
And then there's the trailer sale across the road.
Okay, right, I just been thinking something there.
See, this, this, this dropped the next, it went with the trailer sale.
Yeah, so I remember.
That was this guy's office, remember he had the propane tanks over here where all the.
But again, it's.
And then he put this over here, this, there was a model. And then this is all part of it, so this is all.
We're on thirty-one. Yes, because then you're clearly outside of what.
Is this before the truck? But, you know what, it is, just before the truck.
This is, this is what.
Yeah, okay. So, on this side, and then across the creek, on the other side, that's where, uh, blaze, blaze is probably.
Doing time.
Right, and I'm, see, I, I even, I'm away from them.
So, this is a six-foot high fence?
Again, I don't know, would you, I don't know what the fence is.
Is it a front yard?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
A six-foot high.
Well, you got, on Route thirty-one.
On Route thirty-one. Six-foot high fences in the front yard on Route thirty-one, that section.
But you're not gonna, they're set back, they're set back, if you're looking for visibility issues.
I'm looking at character, I'm looking at character. Character of that, I don't know, you guys know the area, would a six-foot high fence in that area stick out?
Huh?
That's what I was asking John here, but.
What are they gonna take?
Most of that's your market.
Yeah, cause it's nothing. Is it, is it gonna hurt the look of the area?
The trailer sales across the street.
That doesn't look like a, a residence.
Got it, alright. Yeah, Phil cleared it up.
So, if you move this back here, this came forty-one feet or forty feet, and if you're ten feet here, then, you're far enough back to where it's not gonna be.
So, GML referral, and she's coming back, you're gonna wait, you're gonna wait public hearing.
But, okay.
Yeah, I mean, but that's, you know, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah, but she's gotta have a GML, but she's gonna have to have a better site plan here to go to, go, to go to county. It's gonna like to have to have it.
Yes, you see, you gotta, you gotta have a county referral, you know, look at that as well. So, they're gonna be coming back at the same time.
I'm sorry, no, we'll say no, but I mean, we can, if you feel, if you feel that would be a.
If we gotta wait for the GML anyways, I'm.
Okay, alright, that, that Phil's concerned is we ought to have a public hearing, we gotta wait for the GML.
I don't have a problem with that. So, yes, I'll have a public hearing or no?
Well, Phil, Phil's throwing that out, the board's gotta decide.
It's up to you guys. I, I offered the suggestion that she cut back five feet on the, on that line. Instead of being ten, fifteen feet from the corner of, of the house, go ten feet, and then you're clearly outside of that right-of-way, or the easement area. So, if she were to cut back that, then there's not really a concern. Either that, or she would have to show us the exact location of where that forty-six feet goes. In order to, John suggested go to the corner of the porch. She's saying that it would be a smaller area for her dog. So, that's, that's a decision that need to be made.
We're still gonna need a drawing to show exactly where this fence is gonna be. Otherwise, if we have a dispute, we aren't gonna know what we approved and whatever. So, she's gotta come back with that.
Who, who can make that drawing? Who do I go to to get that drawing?
Oh, you can do it yourself, if you, you're, you're the artist, right?
Yeah, so I, I don't understand, this is, I really took time to make this very proportional.
But if you and I, if I looked at that, you think I could go out and find out exactly where your fence is gonna be? I don't think I could.
Put that, put that on a piece of graph paper. Put it on a piece of, uh, quarter inch, quarter inch graph paper to scale.
There's a guy in the other room that could do it, but you gotta pay him to do it.
Yeah.
That's how he makes his living though. Doing stuff for places like this, so that it gets done the correct way.
If you wanted to do it, you can talk to him here in a minute.
But not here yet.
Yeah.
We, we got more people coming in, we gotta, we gotta move it along.
So, in a way, I, I won't get a decision today.
That's correct.
You couldn't have anyway, you even, you had no chance of getting it, a no.
Okay.
This is your first step in the process. It's for them to learn about your application, you to listen, and then decide how you wanna proceed with it. So, now you've got some input, you can come back for the next meeting.
Is it, if I move it five feet and then would clearly pass it, or they don't want?
Okay, I can't say, we can't promise ahead of time.
It would be less of a concern, because you're farther away from the right-of-way.
The other thing, Michelle, uh, Marcel, the other thing is, you know, fences, and especially as was pointed out, this is point-blank, right on Route, it's gonna be right on thirty-one. Everybody's gonna see a six-foot fence. We've, you haven't really told us what the fence is. It appears to be a stockade, is it?
Right, wood, yeah.
Wood, with the, point, stockade fence, oh, totally opaque?
Yeah.
Right, no, okay.
But in the winter, you got those snow piles going by.
She's putting away, she, and.
You have to move it back.
She, if you move it back, that, that would be beneficial, but I'm just saying.
It's far away from the snow.
It's away from it now, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, she's gonna put.
If your fence company were to tell you, you need a building on it.
I know, but, I know, I agree, uh, they know that. Yeah. Alright.
Okay, so we gotta do that, and again.
When's the meeting, next?
Next, the fourth, fourth, right, most.
Yeah.
August fourth?
August fourth.
August fourth.
Six feet.
Now, is there a problem with leaving the post? What if I just leave the post? And do like, um, a living fence?
Beg your pardon?
And do like a living fence, like grates and vines, do I have a?
Woo, wow, hey, that'd be, that, I think that'd be cool, that'd be a cool idea.
What would they need if she wanted to leave the post up and use it as a base for, for a plant, like a planting area? Plant barrier, but will that keep your dogs?
Um, good point, I forgot about that.
The whole reason for your fence. If you could find, if you really could find a creative way to front that, to front that fence, that would make it all the more palatable. You know, something, I mean, but you still gotta, you gotta get your objective is to hold your dogs.
Right.
Right?
The dogs in the back, maybe, that's another.
So, you could do something, but if you could.
My dogs in the back.
You know, if you wanted to plant, but it's gonna take you a couple of years to get a good line of grapes down through there. And I'm not so sure that would happen anytime, but.
Okay.
Alright?
Alright, and then?
But landscape, something, you know, anything like that.
So, are we having?
It's just a.
So, how are we doing this one?
She's gotta have, she's got to have some kind of a, a better drawing. It's got to go to county for a GML. Right now, uh, we'll put a hearing on for the next, the next, uh, the next month. And, uh, and whoever shows up, shows up, but we'll go from there.
You know, your, your fence company can draw it up for you.
Okay.
You know, and again, we have to get that back front though, because it's going to county.
It's gotta be back in the next couple of days.
Okay, sure. Okay. Alright, thank you.
We need to get it back up quick.
Okay.
Okay.
Bye.
Okay, stand next.
Rick's over there.
Yeah, Rick, okay. And then Pete, Pete Kells is here, so, for the help of.
Peter's Chris.
Pete Kells is here too.
Oh, please, come on. Okay.
Everyone today.
Guess we're gonna be here for a while.
No, I don't think so. You gotta save some energy for all that, that case. You don't wanna be warned.
Hey, how are you?
I'm sorry, back to you. I'll send this map that we have stationed, we got this side alone, standing. And she owns that property owned by the Sims Trust, and the building's essentially theirs, and land owned by Michael Stachuski. So, what we've ended up doing, we created a boundary here to the property. The Sims Trust, this is the house, so no longer has Stachuski's land. Created a boundary here, along the acquisition line.
This property right here.
Get this piece of Sims Trust. And the D. S. S. Trust, Sims Trust is gonna proclaim this to him just to reaffirm the location of this boundary. Because this is land that's out of common area, beach area, that's what you see right, regularly along the.
Still check, but I think that's.
And also consideration for him giving them this, he's gonna receive a lot of Sims Trust.
Okay, so, we split this up, and then they're gonna, they, they own this property, it's here.
Yeah, it's a one lot subdivision.
If they're gonna give this guy, this guy right here, this is this guy, they're gonna give him this lot or something.
This is.
In lieu of him giving them all this.
This parcel is part of here.
What it does is solve this problem. Makes the lot a little bit, this is a little smaller. And then we're gonna suck the value of this lot off something.
Created a boundary here. Someone would extend that out, you know? This'll, this'll form the new boundary between the properties to alleviate the encroachment.
Now, I'm just wondering, I mean, is this a subdivision, if this lot currently exists now?
It does, it does, it does now, yeah, there's an end, yeah.
Okay, this is the lot.
What's the acres of?
This is the lot. Okay, the first lot is point zero or seven acres.
A lot of acres, right.
And then adding portion of point zero by five acres. And then adding a third portion.
Yeah, it's a separate, it's completely, yeah, separate, it's a separate, then what they do, what they do is none of us. That's what I'm, that's right, but this is gonna be a separate lot. This is a buildable lot.
See, this is, this one, this is the first one. See, this is, this one, this is the first one.
This right here is gonna be twelve thousand.
And these lines are gonna be added.
That translates to twelve thousand.
And this is gonna be another lot.
So it's a two lot, so we're gonna make it into two lots.
I don't know, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how many lot?
So this is a buildable lot, we're giving them a buildable lot.
I'll be there with three, okay, we're creating this boundary, right now, this boundary goes here, to here, to here, to here, okay, we're creating this boundary now along, this occupation line that's out there, which is this line, okay? So we're gonna get Sutowski Homes, this whole piece, it's gonna give this, these two pieces to, uh, to, uh, Sims Trust, Sims Trust is gonna start, to the boundary that I'm creating.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we're, you're not, we are, we are.
Because we had a gap in, we're in considerations.
We are not a lot of crap.
Sure as they can. Looking up that.
I don't get, so, I, are you suffering, you're suffering, just tell me.
Well, we're taking this piece off of Sutowski's.
Alright, so then that becomes its own lot.
Well, that's gonna be, no, it's gonna be worse, with, uh, the Sims Trust.
So they've, they've one subdivision.
It's gonna be one lot, this'll, this'll all be over here with Sims, so you know, there's no, this line will go away, this'll all be one lot still, you see?
Okay, so. Okay, I got that.
Sutowski will have them made it, and also in conjunction, as part of the consideration for him giving them this lot, he's gonna get a lot across the street.
That's quite an idea, huh? That, that part really is immaterial to us.
We don't care.
Okay, I, I know that, but how are we gonna, how are we gonna call this, Rick, are we gonna call this a, are we gonna call it a two lot subdivision?
I would say, I would like to call it like a one lot subdivision, an annexation of a portion of Sutowski's parcel.
One lot, I mean, the acreage and what, what's being there?
Well, John, you don't like one lot subdivisions.
I don't think that's a thing, because if it's a subdivision, it's automatically two lots.
Two lots, so why, if we just call it a two lot subdivision, and make this other lot, this other will be a lot line adjustment.
Yeah, that's correct, that's true.
As, you're really not dealing, you're not dealing with any volumes of realty value, in other words, you can't, that piece does not make something more buildable or less buildable than it was. So let's just leave that out of the description of this legally, we're gonna do what you've got drawn up.
Okay.
No problem, but we're calling it two lot subdivision, alright?
Sure, that's fine, that's fine.
Alright, that, I, I don't think, people read an annexation, they wouldn't know what, they wouldn't know what we're doing.
Yeah, okay.
Huh?
That's, that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Thanks.
Alright, so what we'll do is, we'll just schedule a public hearing for next, uh, next month?
Okay, next month.
And you're good to go.
Okay, okay.
Alright, so that's gonna be on the fourth, that's six thirty.
Can I steal one of the maps?
Yeah, yeah.
You got extra?
Yeah, I think there's, there's more than one here, no, there's just one there.
Yeah, there's one there.
I steal one, I take that.
Okay, yeah.
Here, your lot, here, John, here, John, out, John, out, take that.
Well, I'm getting, I don't get a whole bunch of.
I'll take this one, you have one in the pile, alright.
He's folding that one right there.
I got one, I got one here.
I'm good. You okay?
He's folding that one right there.
No.
You're gonna wallpaper their house with all the maps.
But you give the power of attorney to her, and I'll give you the power of attorney.
Yes, yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Take it away.
Take it away.
Six fifteen, right?
Thank you, pardon?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, six fifteen, okay. Rick, six fifteen, could we actually do a motion?
No, do we do a motion? No.
No, you need a motion to establish that here.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all, uh, any discussion, all is in favor, alright, okay. Alright, where's Chris Myers, or Rick, uh, no, Peter Kill.
He's right there.
Pete, come forward. What's wrong with that with Pete?
Can't recognize him with his mask on.
Hey!
How are you?
There he is, how are you?
Good.
Alright, Peter. Many years ago, you were here before us.
No, it was only my fault.
Well, it seemed like many years ago.
A lot of things have happened since then.
That's right, that's right, you want to write that down, there's been a lot of things happening since that time, okay, uh, how'd that get?
Let me see, everybody's still here, healthy and safe.
We're good.
So far. So, thirty-two by forty, thirty-two by forty-six storage building. Go ahead. That's what the county, we got a county referral back in the fall.
Yeah.
The year was two thousand nineteen.
Thirty-two by forty?
Thirty-two by forty-six, according to the county.
Forty-six, you agree with that?
Actually, John, I think this would be called a, um, special youth permit amendment. But then again, you probably ought to cite the original, it's special youth, and I have no idea.
Yeah, just going by the county referral that came back.
Okay, yeah.
Whatever, whatever it is.
Alright. So you folks, we are, Pete's, uh, Pete's put this building up on his property up here, it's been concrete, and we went through everything about the, the drainage or whatever, it's all gotta be built to, to code, that these, these guys will work through with Peter, uh, but as far as the citing and everything else, I don't think we have any, we have any issues at this point. It's just that Pete needs to be here, we need to finish this, and then he can move forward.
Yep.
Okay, are there any questions?
What are the actual dimensions of this gonna be?
Thirty-six by forty-eight, actually.
Well, this, is this, was this what we were talking about before, that thirty-two by forty-six, so, so that's changed?
Yes.
That's forty-six by thirty-two.
Well, I get, I get, an estimate's on thirty-six by forty-eight, I didn't realize that we were at thirty-two by forty-six.
So, so, well, what is it you want, do what you want.
Well, well, put down what you want to.
Thirty-six by forty-eight, let's leave it like that.
Thirty-six by forty-eight, okay, so we sent to the county before a thirty-two by forty-six, as part of the referral, back in September, and they got back, and they don't care about it, that's a good one.
They're not gonna care about it, then, no.
No, they're not gonna care about it.
No. We, I still, now, let's see, did we do secret?
Well, that's a great question.
I did not find a sign, secret.
Ah, ah, we did it on, uh, August sixth, the year two thousand nineteen, almost a year ago.
Okay.
After some discussion, secret has completed a motion by David, second by Paul, and negative decrees was issued for this unlisted action, Rose, did we disagree with that?
No, 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 it's half-half. I was thinking that.
I thi- I think you guys did secret, I'll be honest, but I think it, it looks like we did it, according to my, my attorney notes, but it would be in the minutes of the meeting from, uh, 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 Oc-, what'd I say, August?
September.
August fifth.
Septem- September third, two thousand nineteen minutes.
October ninth, open up. If you've got it hard.
Are we looking, is this, we're gonna do a public hearing for this one, Frank, or what are we doing?
No, we're wa- we're gonna waive the public.
Okay, do we have, uh, you got the, this, uh, do we get the building citing, cited on a map of some sort?
Yes.
Just look, right there, there it is, yeah, except I got the wrong dimensions on my map.
Probably something I knew.
Peter Kills, do you see a turn?
No, if you tell me we did secret, then we did secret.
You're right, uh, I find it, I find it, I find it.
Secret, done.
Okay, good, I just don't have a sign.
August sixth.
Secret was completed.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna note, I'm just gonna note on this one.
Yeah, I mean, the minutes say it, that's all right.
Well, it's on there.
Not, not a type one, anyway. So that part's good.
Pete, that, now, is this full score?
No, it's not gonna be full score.
Would you back that, the doctor?
No.
Yeah, so what are you, what's, what's going on, is this storage associated with what?
Uh, it's, yeah, storage in garage, but it's, it's gonna have, you can, that full score, you.
Does it have bathrooms in it there?
No.
Uh, lighting, lights on the outside of it?
Yeah, I'd say yes.
Where, where are the lights gonna be on your building, because, you know, with exactly, what kinda lighting are you getting, will it be shining onto neighboring properties or into surrounding highways, is it downpass shielded?
Yes. All of the above.
Speaking of lighting, if you got that light on the north side of the building, there are ways to be readjusted, so it's not hitting the drivers as they come over the bridge. Drive there at night and come over the top of the bridge, that light's right there, I.
That's true.
I notice it, but I won't from here. It's nice to be good.
Okay.
So you got a heating handle, I didn't. Lighting all the other panel, there was another.
No, I, I, every time I go home, I, I, first thing I see is like on the top of the bridge.
So we got, we got thirty-six by forty-eight, um, heated, uh, uh, storage building. And the, the submitted, uh, plan, this is a submitted plan that we have, he's got, he's got, what he, he has are, you know, his hand drawn setbacks, but I don't know, I, I, I don't, I don't know how to read it, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't understand how to read this drawing, as far as making sure it's done, when it's set up, it's in the right location. I see a fifty-foot mark for a hundred and twenty-five feet from one side, that's from.
Fifty feet from the road, and it's, I've forgotten now, forty-five feet of property lines on both sides, one side is the old railroad bed that.
Wait, where's the thirty-five? Yeah, just show me where the thirty-five is.
They own property on both sides.
Where's the thirty-five on?
I believe it's, uh, on this side, thirty-five, I believe it's thirty-five on both sides, 'cause this, this property is a hundred and fifty-five feet wide, the building's only.
Well, you, well, you guys get, you guys get to set the setbacks, Frank.
But you see this, this here, and this line here?
That you.
That's me, I own on both.
Right.
This is the, this is the old railroad bed, I own on both sides of the railroad bed.
It depends on.
Right.
Pete, you're looking at the same, you're looking at the same drawing Pete had right there in front of us.
Yes.
You, it appears, it appears to me, now, Wayford Road, Wayford Road at some point here does bend, right?
Yes.
You bend around, then you go up the, up the, up the ramp.
Up the overpass, yes.
Yeah, so, this snapshot right here, you're before the real bend in the, is, is, what I'm looking at here, is this building looks to me like you're a little, quite a ways off Wayford Road.
Yes.
But what's the, what, what land is this in?
I own that too.
Oh, what, what, what is that?
When they're, it's just a little pie-shaped piece that's in there next to Palens's, there's a little piece.
No, it was on the other side of the road, the top, the other, Palens' property's on the other side.
Yes, on the other side of the lake. This is the old Lakeport though.
Ah.
New Lakeport Road goes up through the center here, and I own property on both sides of it, across the street.
Okay.
Getting Palens's, I own that section in there that they own, Dad's ice cream's got a sign up there.
Okay. Oh, I, I could not, I could not understand what.
Yeah, when the ri- when the road went, made the turn and went up for the overpass, they split that piece of property right in the, well, not half, but, they left me with a little piece over there that I could give to the town, they wanted, because you can't do anything.
Okay, so you're quite, that building is quite a ways off the road.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And you're the, and whatever is between the road, between that property line and the road is you anyway.
Yes. Yeah, I own all the property around it, except the old railroad.
Okay, that, that satisfies the board, in this case, I mean, I don't, this, this is.
The building's gonna sit where you had the storage tanks, the septic tank storage there for a while.
Yeah, it's, it's quite a way. He's a long way, he's a long way off.
A long way.
Yeah, he's a long way off.
Last fall, I put some stone in there, and that's where the building's gonna be, right where that stone is, that's just.
Alright.
We haven't done anything since then, until we get the.
Okay, we waived the hearing, we've done the secret, we've done, we've done the secret, we got the plane, we got the building, we should be good to go. Counselor, anything else?
I got nothing.
Okay, alright, came a motion approved.
What's that, Phil?
Wait a minute.
Save the driveway.